Slim Jones, young. I'm on the Port of Olympia.
Maybe we have one minute? One minute till we're live?
Raino cherries or maraschino cherries, yeah.
All right, we have thirty seconds. Mayor, when you hear the recording announcement, you can go ahead and begin.
Thanks.
Okay, ten seconds.
So it's six o'clock and I'd like to call to order this Lacey City Council work session on August thirteenth. We have a council member dining is attending remotely, but all other council members are here present. I also want to acknowledge that we, the city of Lacey, are on its ancestral land at the tribal people, the Treaty of Messing Creek, including an Esqali Indian tribe and the Squoxan Indian tribe. That can again motion to approved this evening's agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as published?
Second, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries. We have an approved agenda. And first up on our approved agenda is the Port of Olympia update. We'll call it Alex. Come on up and come up, questioner? If you want to come up over here.
Usually down there because you can drive as a question.
Oh, there is no presentation.
He asked, we should bring a presentation. Rick said no.
Real.
Brain, brain breaking.
Yes, well, obviously, we have a new executive director and we thought it would be great for you to come and introduce yourselves and also give an update on how things are going at the port and so we'll just turn it over to you.
Oh, boy. Well, thanks for the opportunity. Really appreciate it. And I think I did meet some of you in other venues and at the interview process that the port conducted. So, so I've been on the job since March eighteenth, so just hitting five months now on the job. I came from a variety of things. I started out as an attorney, actually, doing environmental law and worked for the Attorney General's Office for a period of time and then transitioned to doing instead sort of environmental management within Port of Olympia in twenty twelve through twenty sixteen and then over to state agencies. So I worked at the Department of Ecology over at the Hamper Nuclear Site for four years over the Tri-Cities and then worked at the Department of Natural Resources for about four years on a variety of different issues. But I just loved working at the port when I was there in twenty twelve to twenty sixteen. Ports are really cool because they're both governments, but they have a specific economic development mission and they also operate businesses. And so it's just a real opportunity to do good and creative things that do good things for the community. And so really saw that there was an opportunity to help the port be, sort of maximize what it could do for the community and would love to be part of helping the port get there. So, and I've been here five months. We have a couple of huge initiatives that the commission has prioritized. One of them is our button like cleanup, which I think you guys have heard about and we've talked about. But one thing that prior executive director Sam Gibney and Lisa Parks, who's over at Tom Water now, sort of envisioned was integrating that cleanup work with really reimagining what our port peninsula could be and trying to take advantage or sort of leveraging both. So when we do the cleanup, we'll need to dredge some sediments. We have an opportunity to use those sediments, then reuse them essentially on the port peninsula to make the peninsula more resilient to sea level rise. But if we're going to do that, let's imagine what else, what amenities we could put out there on the port peninsula. How can we improve Swan Town? What can we do to connect Swan Town better with downtown Olympia or the port peninsula with downtown Olympia? And what amenities would the community like to see and how can we help, like help them come to fruition? And this builds off of work that was done in Vision twenty fifty, so I know a lot of folks throughout Thurston County participated in that, as well as a destination waterfront, which looked sort of very specifically at that eastern part of the port peninsula where Swan Town is. It goes all the way up to Harfire. So we're engaged now in the master planning process. The commission was kind enough to approve a contract for a group of consultants to help us with that. We're on a pretty fast timeframe, so we want to get it done by summer of next year and will not just be looking at that same group of properties on the east side of the port peninsula, but we're also going to take a look at the marine terminal and do a master plan that includes a marine terminal. And there are some folks in the community who've wanted to have a conversation about, you know, what is the value of the marine terminal? And so we're really going to talk about that and talk about what its future uses could be, whether that includes cargo over the current acreage or whether it's a smaller footprint or there are some who would like to see the marine terminal go away altogether. And we'll just talk through what all those different options in the master planning process. If I'm forgetting anything, Commissioner I'll please.
You're doing great.
Okay, and then what else? Oh, and then we are continuing to work in partnership with the city of Tom Water on trying to get a habitat conservation plan for those lands at the airport and the New Market Industrial Campus and Clean Water Center. We have been a little frustrated and it's gone very slowly. And so we're working very hard to see what we can do with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. We're talking with the staff for the congressional delegation if we need help to see if they can help sort of broaden our federal partners a little bit, but we're working very hard on that. But two other things that this commission was pretty vocal about during the interview process was they really want to see the port be more transparent. And so that's something we're really working on is how do we do a better job in communicating with the community, making sure we're getting input from folks? And yeah, just making sure that we're getting the word out about what the port is doing so folks have an opportunity to let us know how they feel about it. And then the second is how do we do a better job of supporting economic growth throughout the county and not just growth that's related to our specific business lines or our properties, but what else can we do throughout the county? So things I've talked with Rick Walk about are, I know he's got a real interest in let's reinvigorate the foreign trade zone and we're very interested in doing that. And Michael Cade has offered to help with that. And so when he gets back from vacation, we're going to sit down and talk about what that looks like. The Lacey Maker Space has asked us for a certain level of sponsorship over the next three years and I, we're going to bring that to the commission as we do our budgeting for twenty twenty-five, but I know there's a lot of support for that. And yeah, just welcome thoughts you guys have about how we can better connect with Lacey because I know that's something we historically really wanted to do and tried to do with the CBC building. But yeah, would love to figure out ways to do that more and even if it's just helping provide opportunities for job growth and business growth in Lacey as part of that.
Do you have any questions? Go ahead, councillor.
You mentioned that, you know, there's a lot of interest in further conversation on the future of the marine terminal. And I would rate myself not very well informed in general on that topic, but I've heard that there are both sort of financial concerns with the marine terminal and also environmental concerns.
Yeah.
But kind of on the other side, I've heard concern about if we say goodbye to it, like if we were to shut down the marine terminal or get rid of it. If we have a large earthquake.
Right.
The marine terminal is one of the only ways that we might be able to ship goods into the community if we're stranded, like if I five falls down in the event of a large earthquake. And so I'm just interested in how we, how we would balance that, right? Because it's sort of like firefighters, right? Firefighters may not always be fighting fires, but you say goodbye to firefighters at your peril because someday there's going to be a fire. So the marine terminal seems like an investment in emergency preparedness. But how do we make it, I guess, viable and good for the environment all the other days of the week?
And obviously there's the national security. Obviously, there's a national security where it's one of the few terminals that go into Joint Base Los McCord as well.
Yeah, yeah. And we're reconnecting with JBLM. I think over the past, like the transitions at the port, we've sort of lost that connection, so we're reconnecting with them. And I think part of what we want to do as we go through this master planning process is first educate before we ask for input. And there's a lot that would go into not having a marine terminal. I mean, you mentioned one of the ones we're concerned about, which is we think there is a big value in terms of, if there were a disaster. But also I think people are very well versed in sort of what the revenue generation is currently and what the possibilities are. And there's also things like, we've gotten a lot of federal grants to help with projects and assets on the marine terminal and if you're trying to get rid of the marine terminal and unwind those, it's not so easy. There's a process associated with that. Same with, we need to deauthorize federally authorized navigation channels in Turtle Basin and that takes an act of Congress. And, and so want to make sure that we're, yeah, getting, gathering all that information and educating people before we say, here are different options you might, that we could, you know, use for the marine terminal. Thank you.
Anything else?
What's the, any, anything on the future of the Little League, Capital Little League and the fields there?
Yeah, so we came to an agreement with Capital Little League and again, I wasn't involved in these negotiations, so this is from memory, that I think they recognize that those, the airport properties really need to have a sort of associated airport purpose. And so they, they have recognized and agree with us that over, we need to figure out a way to transition them away. And so we've come to an agreement that sets goals for them over a period of time while they remain there for them to fundraise and get money to find different facilities. And we've sort of jointly together with them set targets for fundraising. And my understanding is they're currently ahead of their fundraising goals, which is awesome.
Do you know how many years that plan is? Is it three or is it five?
Why, two?
Yeah, I wanted to say five.
Yeah, yeah, it was a, it wasn't a short term. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councillor Day?
Yeah, I'm more, more of a statement than really any questions, but I remember being on the campaign trail this past year and a couple of the Newport commissioners were, you know, campaigning. And, and the port was, after, you know, we'd have these events, these meetings, the port, the port stuff was really what after conversations were about. And there was so much kind of passion on, on, you know, both sides of the issue, but there wasn't really a lot of clear direction on, okay, well, what's your actual solution? So I'm, you know, self admittedly, the port, because of the least amount of interaction that I've had is what I've known the least about. And so after knowing you were coming and talking to Rick and really delving in, I, A, am excited that, you know, the kind of getting back to, to, to working with the port and I feel like we have an opportunity to reengage and see where we can end benefits. And so I'm just really excited, especially you talked about the transparency of it, just getting a vision out there and starting to see what action could take place. So I'm really just excited for, for what can happen in the future and, and really shape that, that whole area.
Awesome. Thank you.
Councillor.
There's been conversation over the last few years about possibility of getting solar project out there on port property. There's also been talk about having a facility where farmers can bring their produce out there. Do you know if any of those have grown links at all or in the, in the popping?
And you can help me on this one, Commissioner. I think on the solar projects, if, if it's on the Tom Water properties, one of the challenges is it's not just the gopher we need to worry about. It's the street torn lark. And they need wide open spaces they can look at and solar arrays that can't get in the way of that. And so we're happy to look at that on properties that don't have that kind of limitation. Excuse me, because I think our, I know our commission is very much, we want to do things that are, support environmental sustainability. The second one was, oh, agricultural facilities. Right now, there's no specific plan, but we're happy to partner on those things and looking for opportunities. So for example, one of the things we need to do to get habitat conservation plan is buy mitigation land that is, has suitable soils for gophers. And there is the Tuckman property that they're willing to sell, the city of Tom Water and Port are sort of attached at the hip on all of this. So we've sort of said, we want to, you know, buy in with you guys on that property. And we were talking with the Thurston Conservation District and they're actually looking to build a brand new, like facilities or home for their operations that is also sort of a hub for other conservation nonprofits. And their goal is to really have that sited on a place where they are doing conservation. And so we said, hey, we're thinking about buying the Tuckman property. Would you guys be interested in maybe co-locating on that property? Because there's some existing structures there, maybe they can be repurposed and help us manage it and also it would facilitate what you guys are trying to do. And they're like totally, apparently they're very excited about the possibility. So we're still heading down that road, but there's a lot more we can do when it comes to supporting the South Sound and Ag. And I think, I am happy to have the conversations with the folks who are, who have ideas on that and see what we can do to support them.
Thurston East, Thurston, excuse me, Thurston EDC also has that food distribution hub that they've, they've worked on for regional produce and whatnot. We've, and I don't know how involved we've gotten, but we've, I know we've, we've met with, met with them and, and support them as much as we can, I suppose.
And I think we've given financial support as well to those, to their efforts.
Agricultural development is one of the three pillars of economic development of the county, isn't it? That's like a part of the plan. It's one of the three legs of the stool.
So JBLM, especially the, the Air Force side of it with the buffering zone for the runway approach and landing. Do we have any of those similar challenges? I know they're trying to re-navigate or relocate businesses. They're just north of the runway and stuff, but you know, it seems like we have pretty good open space like you're mentioning. You know, so just wondering if you have those.
What is the future of our airport? I mean, of course, we've all seen the plans of the future possible someday, what it could look like expansion. But I mean, what, what is the reality of a future expansion of the airport and more flights?
Yeah, my understanding is in terms of physical, like growing the space physically, we, there isn't any land to do that. And I think there's sort of built-in limitations associated with that. In terms of the length of the runway, we're never going to have giant planes going in and out of there. I think there's things like also loading capacity on the runways that, you know, they can't, our runways can't handle huge heavy planes. But I think that said, there is, I think there's, we're, we do master plan updates with the FAA. I think there's, it is seen as a place where there are opportunities to say, have more hangars and have more private aircraft, as well as have small commercial service again. And that it, that depends on a multitude of factors, including are there carriers who are interested in having service down here? Who thinks this is a viable market? But that is something that's sort of on our radar screen. I know it's something that is, experience Olympia and beyond has identified, so that's what they see as a real priority. And I, you know, personally, I think it'd be great if we had some commercial service that, some smaller airplanes that could.
I remember taking a commercial flight out.
Yeah.
I think if you could do it at Pullman, you could do it.
Yeah, and so, so, but yeah, personally, I'm excited about the opportunity. I think there's a lot of conversations with the community though, before we do that. And it would be a, like a multi-year ramp up because there's a lot in terms of facility upgrades we'd need to do and staffing upgrades. It takes a lot more people to run commercial service out of an airport. But yeah, it's definitely, that's on, it's on our radar screen, so.
Well, the only last thing I think we have is obviously Lacey is always willing to be a partner with, with the port. We were very excited, you know, when you bought property and we actually had money set aside and a fund to, to hopefully, you know, do something special there. Obviously, that didn't come to fruition, but we're, we're, you know, always interested in seeing what opportunities are out there to have more economic development. We know there's a need for a smaller incubator space. That's what sort of our visioning back at the time when we, we looked at that spot saying, you know, could we get do some commercial kitchen type things there? We did some smaller, you know, some smaller commercial spaces that it's just hard to find. You know, when you first gain started, you just, there's not very many small commercial spaces out there for start, start some businesses. And so I think that's something that we're always having in the back of our mind and if we can partner with the port, we'd, we'd love to do that.
Yeah, yeah, appreciate that. And I know our commission's very interested in that. So as I'm speaking for you, sorry. And so, yeah, let's keep talking as if there's opportunities for properties to come up. We'd be interested in seeing what that looks like.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye, Bob. Nice meeting you.
So next up on our agenda is the Transportation Benefit District Annual Report.
All right. So we minimize it. We'll run with it. So, see here. Just. This one. Well, good evening. So we're going to break this presentation down into three parts. I'm going to do the TB one-on-one presentation. Some of the council members, four council members, when the transportation benefit district was formed. And then, you know, the star here, Brian's going to do the twenty twenty-three annual report presentation. So he'll go over the twenty twenty-three financial summary, completed projects, PCI rating, the twenty twenty-three projects, and then the TBD overview as well as twenty twenty-four projects. And then Aubrey will wrap up with the, the future project selection criteria in twenty twenty-five and beyond. But just a front and reminder, when we're all done, we need a motion from you to approve the annual report. So, one-on-one, we're going to talk about UBD council authority, legislative intent, kind of definition of transportation improvement, what that means because it's key. Now, why do we utilize a TBD, formation of a TBD assumption of powers, funding, dollar measure, council authority? And then what, you know, Tom Water and Thurston County are doing. All right, so this is kind of important, so I will read this. I'm not going to read every slide. So RCW, Transportation Benefit District. Transportation improvements shall be administered and maintained as other public streets, roads, highways and transportation improvements. The Transportation Benefit District is a quasi municipal corporation and independent taxing authority. The Transportation Benefit District constitutes a body corporate and possesses all the usual powers of a corporation for public purposes, as well as the other powers that may now or hereafter be specifically conferred by statute. So go back to the intent. If you as a council said, what's, you know, what's our role? What do we do? What's our authority? It's pretty much the same as your authority, being a city council over all the other transportation projects we have. So, yeah, that's that back. What's the legislative intent? The legislative intent is to provide a funding tool of the local agencies to help fund our transportation program. So those transportation improvements that we think are needed. So what is a transportation improvement? What do they mean by that? Well, it's a wide variety, a whole array of things. It's anything in our transportation comp plan, but it also includes operations, preservation and maintenance. So it's, it's pretty much wide open, what we can do with those funds based on the RCW. So why utilize a TBD? So as noted, it's a funding tool. But the reason that the state created this tool is that local agencies, but more so cities and counties, have struggled with funding to fund a transportation program, specifically operations, maintenance and upkeep of the system. As you all know, the majority of our big capital projects are funded by state and federal grants. And as you all know, you can take all of the, all of the property tax in the city of Lacey and it doesn't even cover the costs of law enforcement. So property tax doesn't cut it, sales tax doesn't cut it. The only real revenue stream available dedicated is gas tax. And we get now a little over a million on one point one. And that split seventy percent goes to fund just the transportation maintenance department and then thirty percent goes into the arterial street fund. And then just for perspective, you know, like I said, seventy percent or about seven hundred and fifty thousand goes to transportation maintenance, department section and public works. But that budget for that's four point seven five million. So it doesn't really put in much of a debt. And then, though, that's just speaking to the maintenance. Historically, and this is one of the things I love about Lacey. Lacey was taken well over a million dollars, up to one point eight million a year, and created an overlay program. That is rare in the state of Washington. And that's one of the reasons why our roads are in some of the best condition of any city in the state. But in two thousand and ten, it became evident that wasn't sustainable. There were growing competing needs for the general fund. So it was obvious that we needed to maintain a program like that. How do you fund it? And that's where the TBD came into play. So between two thousand and ten and two thousand and sixteen, when the, when, you know, when council passed the resolution to take it to the voters, there were fifteen meetings, detailed meetings, briefings to weigh the pros and the cons and, you know, what should we do, all that, all of that. So, you know, the two, two main steps was kind of three in terms of forming and utilizing a TBD. But the formation, council has the authority to form, you have to hold a hearing to form and then based on the hearing, if the council decides to form, it passes resolutions. So you did all that. The resolution fourteen eighty-five was passed in January twenty eighth, two thousand and sixteen, and it was mostly focused on preservation in terms of the wording of the ordinance. You know, the fix of first philosophy, but keeping in mind, the whole reason we looked at this was to maintain the overlay program. So another step is the assumption of powers. So when you form a transportation benefit district, it is a separate standalone taxing district. The way the RCWs are, is that the governing board of that district would be the city council, but it's a separate entity. You hold separate meetings, keep separate minutes. So it's much more convenient to, to assume the powers. So, yes.
So is the boundaries of the TBD exactly the same as the boundaries of the city of Lacey?
Yes. So, and, and that's an excellent question. So in order for the city council to, the city to assume and the city council to assume the authority of TBD, the, the boundaries need to be, use their word.
Code terminus?
Code terminus, the same. So, so anyway, yeah, so we took that step. And, and then, you know, we started looking at funding sources. So transportation benefit districts most commonly funded by either sales tax increase or, or vehicle fee increase. There, there are other tools that just aren't that common and, and aren't used that much. So sales tax increase. At the time we formed this, the limit was zero point two percent and it required voter approval. In twenty twenty-two, the legislature bumped it up from zero point two percent ceiling to zero point three and also granted councils, councilmatic authority to approve at least zero point one percent of that. See, vehicle fees. So you can pass up to one hundred dollar vehicle fees. You can go up to fifty dollars councilmatically, but that's in steps. So the council could authorize a twenty dollar vehicle fee increase. And then two years after that, another twenty, and two years after that, another ten. But to go beyond that requires voter approval. So funding considerations. So the council looked at both for funding, the vehicle. So the council looked at both um for funding, the vehicle license fees and the sales tax. But basically, how much revenue would be generated by those two options? But then equally important, what's the impact to the citizens, the average household from those? So this was a slide that we put together in two thousand and fifteen to address those two options. Uh the twenty dollar vehicle fee would generate six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars per year. The zero point two percent sales tax increase was estimated would generate one point six to one point eight million a year. So then that that answered the revenue question. Then to answer the burden question, uh Master Troy Woo put this slide together and, you know, obtaining information from, say, uh, you know, TRPC in terms of average household incomes and such. It was estimated that a zero point two percent sales tax increase would create about a twenty five dollar additional uh cost to to the average family per year. Uh the assumption was made, the average family has two vehicles, so then that would generate forty dollars uh per year for the average family. So not only was the sales tax option a lower burden, it generated considerably more revenue, partly because uh people from outside of the city limits come in and chop at city lacing, contribute to sales tax, as well as, you know, like new home construction, there are, there are many other sources. So based on on those factors, um you know, the city council decided to go for the photo approved zero point two percent sales.
I I had a quick question.
Yes.
It's similar to uh the kind of the borders question. If if there was a vehicle sales tax, would that apply to only the vehicles in the city limits? Or if someone got their vehicle licensed or registered at a uh registration office in the city?
I'll defer to Troy on that. So the the point of purchase, does that matter on sales tax for purchasing a vehicle?
Or are you registering the vehicle?
Registering the vehicle. I think you had to be a Lacey, yeah.
So the vehicle fee, the vehicle license fee only applies to people within the city limits. And when Olympia first passed their first twenty dollar vehicle fee increase, that created some problems uh because uh they were using zip codes and uh there are people who lived in outside of Olympia city limits.
That's where, that's where I was kind of going with the kind of complications of of that, you know.
So in terms of uh assessing the vehicle license fee increase, that only applies to people who live inside the city limits.
So if you live on one side of the street, potentially, you would not get that added fee when you went to register your vehicle. But if you lived, you know, on our side of the street, so to speak, that you would pay for it.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Um so as was shown at the time, the estimate for the revenue to be generated by zero point two percent sales tax increase was one point six to one point eight million. The reason I showed this slide is that this demonstrates a hundred percent of that revenue is needed for the overlay program and, you know, sidewalk repair. So you'll see later, and Brian will probably get into it. Every, when he runs the model, it looks at um how much does our pavement condition index rating deteriorate if there's no funding? Um he can plug in any amount, but you know, say you take and assume amount plugged it in. What happens to the PCI in ten years? Um in this case, he also asked the question, how much does it take to maintain it? This slide is from two thousand and fifteen. At that time, it was said three point three million. Um and then the unconstrained, if you want to, you know, ramp it up fairly fast, how much should you spend? But the purpose of this slide is just to demonstrate that in order to keep our PCI where it is, uh we needed the full amount of the transportation benefit district to to get there. Uh so.
It says here, we're still at twenty bips, right?
What's that?
We're still at twenty bips?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We didn't, we haven't gone.
So the um the voter approval comes with a ten year authorization, and it has to be renewed. In terms of the question, what can we spend it on now? It's basically, uh we wrote the ordinance so that it was focused on preservation and maintenance, but it was open to more. However, what locks us in the preservation maintenance is the ballot measure itself. This is what the voters saw. And as you can see, uh revenues would fund the pavement management program, provide for pavement maintenance and preservation to extend the life of the city street system through the use of structural rehab, pavement repair, patching, asphalt, resurfacing, slurry seal, other restoration, resurfacing methods, and pedestrian improvements, including repair or replacement of sidewalks and construction of curb ramps in conjunction with the pavement management program. So that's what the voters voted on.
Fixing things, but not building new things.
Right, right. So.
Although, session improvements is in there.
Well, when you go back and tie that to the resolution and the ordinance, it's pretty clear that it was only intended for this. And that's, you know, I mean, Roger Schleson and I did more than twenty five, you know, public meetings, outreaches, Kiwanis Rotary, and all these kind of things, and council members did as well. But the message was very clearly for over the overlay program. There was no mention of any capital, and actually, we specifically said no capital. So that was the intent. So going back to the authority, just as we mentioned before, you know, the question is asked, you know, what's council's authority? How is this administered, operated? Pretty much the same as the rest of our transportation program. And if you want to know what our neighbors are doing, Olympia, uh two thousand and eight, they formed their TBD. Two thousand and nine, council approved a twenty dollar vehicle fee. And two thousand and sixteen, they uh since it applied the rule more than twenty four months after the twenty dollar fee in two thousand and sixteen, they increased it from twenty to forty. In two thousand and twenty two, when the, when the uh legislature increased the available sales tax increased to zero point three percent and allowed for a zero point one percent councilmatically approved. That was in two thousand and twenty two. In two thousand and twenty three, December, uh Olympia City Council approved a zero point one percent sales tax increase specifically focused on pedestrian multimodal. And that's how their ordinance is written. Thurston County formed a uh a TBD in two thousand and fourteen, but they've never funded it. But um counties have a road tax, so they have a revenue stream that cities don't. So uh there aren't that, there's over a hundred cities in the state of Washington that have TBDs. There's only a handful of counties. I mean, there aren't as many counties, but there are only a few. City of Tom Water in two thousand and fourteen formed the TBD, and then in two thousand and fifteen, voters approved zero point two percent.
So Olympia has the vehicles fee and the one percent?
Yes. There are a number of cities in the state that have a combination. So that wraps up the TBD one on one. So Ryan, send your report is next. Did you have any questions on this you want to answer before we move into the annual report portion?
I have one question.
Go ahead, is.
So, so City of Tom Water, uh their voters approved two thousand and fifteen, so they're gonna be coming up. I mean, do we know they're gonna be going out for um that again in two thousand and twenty five?
Yes, that's their intention is to go in April twenty twenty five out to the voters. That's their current intention. I don't think they filed it yet. That's what they've told us.
I just think that would be a good indication of of kind of where we stand, you know, coming up on twenty twenty seven. So I think it'll be a good indicator of what type of work we need to put in.
So one last comment for Brian takes over. Uh AWC had their legislative priority meeting last week, so they're just gearing up, ramping up. Their legislative committees are gonna start working, but one of the items on their agenda is to uh pursue councilmatic approval for the entire sales tax amount. Uh so uh if they are successful, then that will give this council additional options to consider.
Thanks.
All right, I I don't know how to follow that, but let's go through the uh annual report and some projects here. Um the TBD is interesting because we report on the prior year's findings in the current year. So it's twenty twenty four, we're reporting on twenty twenty three because we have to wait for all the financial chips to fall and know the exact numbers before posting it, because we have to post accurate information to the newspaper record and to our website for the RCW. Um here you'll see the finances. The uh key numbers to note are the four point one million in revenue from the TBD this year. Um we had about seven million in expenditures on projects and engineering and sidewalk construction costs. Uh that's a net of negative two point eight million, but we also began the year with five point eight million. So we were playing a little bit of catch up with funds, and obviously, we don't have, want to have a lot of money sitting in the fund. We want to spend it as we get it to show progress that we're getting stuff done with TBD money. And uh the end of year balance was about three million dollars as of December thirty first.
I was happy to see um no debt service. Have we rebounded these dollars?
It's not. And we try not to overspend. We schedule projects based on what's in the fund and try to only spend what's there and not over the top. Uh this chart shows the progression of uh spending throughout the years and a list of project types that we've done. Um in the beginning, we thought we were only gonna get about one point eight million a year through TBD. So we were planning about one point eight billion, and it turns out that we get anywhere from three point one to this year was three point eight, but with other revenues, it was four point one. So early on, we spent.
If I could make a comment, so when I was looking at Olympia's zero point one percent, the estimate will generate three point one million. So just obviously an indicator of their sales tax.
Yeah. And then the the other revenue?
That would be.
It's primarily interest.
Okay.
And uh at twenty twenty three was our biggest project load in terms of actual spending through TBD money, where we spent close to seven million dollars as opposed to the next highest of uh four point two in twenty twenty one. Uh here's a map showing all the areas that uh TBD money has been spent at. It's widespread. Uh we try to hit streets in the north and the south, everywhere, residential neighborhoods, arterials, collectors. Um trying to spread the money around wherever it's needed. Uh Scott showed a scenario chart earlier from twenty fifteen. This is the most updated version from twenty twenty three. Um the numbers are a little different. Uh obviously, through time, the Street Saver decision tree has changed for better pavement management practice. We have a lot more knowledge on what we do to certain re, certain streets at a, at a certain time. So you punch that into the system, and then it's Spartan knows and recalculates everything versus before, where it's just using the base uh Street Saver tree, where you can manually go in and update based on your practices and stuff that you've learned. And myself and uh prior people in my position have updated it through the years. And I think it's a a pretty good gauge on modern pavement management practice. Uh the big numbers to note are uh the unfunded scenario, where if we don't spend any money in the next ten years, our PCI will drop to seventy one from the eighty four point four words add. Um scenario two estimates about what we bring in a year for TBD. And if we spend three point five million every year from now till ten years from now, um the PCI would drop, but it would only drop to eighty three. And then uh the third scenario is relatively important because it shows the amount to maintain your current PCI. But the cost to maintain a a single point, once you get above the eighties, is not a linear trend anymore. It's more exponential, just because for the most part, you have to rebuild the streets to get them higher than that. Because if you just crack seal them, they don't bring them up past ninety very often if it has cracks, because it has other aging factors to it, other distresses. So for one point to go from eighty three to eighty four is one number, and to go from eighty four to eighty five would be higher than that, and so on, so forth. Um scenario four, the unconstrained budget uh shows that where, well, we have a lot of streets that used to be poor that are in good shape now. So technically, they wouldn't need anything done to them, but what the unconstrained budget does is it brings everything up to essentially a ninety that first year, and then calculates how much it would cost just to maintain it from there. But it's usually impractical because you really wouldn't want to keep every street at a ninety. Um it it's way too good of a condition to do most treatments, especially on like an arterial where you don't really have a a good option outside of a a crack seal. Maybe if we dabble in chip seal, something like that, but. And uh the chart on the left shows that our PCI is generally the same for the past all of years, or so it hasn't changed too much based on the spending that we've had, and we've had the luxury of a TBD for six of those years now. Uh getting into projects, uh the first one was uh twenty twenty two overlay utilities. Uh spent one point six one million in TBD money, uh two point four eight total with the utility work. It was on Seventh Avenue, Gulf Hook Road in place, Front Street, and Fourteenth Avenue. Uh the utility work was a a water line that needed to go through their transmission line. Uh next would be uh carpet and room improvements. This would have been, uh this was from uh the woodland trail down to the city limit line by Ruland. Um eight hundred eighty seven thousand was spent through TBD, three point five five was million was spent total. There was a large water line in the street that needed replacement. It's a sixteen inch main that goes through there. It's a pretty important trunk line to the city. Uh Mullen sewer improvements down by the southeast city limits. Um it's been four hundred and sixty eight thousand in TBD money, uh one point one seven total with utility work. Uh there was a sewer line that was also upsized in the process. Uh twenty twenty three overlay phase one, um no utilities with this one. It was all all paving and and maintenance. Uh this was three point one eight million in TBD funds. Uh it's a portion of Rainier Road, uh the Rainier and uh Battle Street Roundabout, sixty six, the Carpenter Hills Loop, Emerald Hills Neighborhood, uh the areas that we couldn't slurry with the prior project. And then uh thirty fourth Ave had a a section of of sunken pavement that needed to be repaired. Turned out it was a storm issue. The um dry well was cracking and falling apart. And we're hoping replacing that and then repaving the road, adding some good base, so it'll prevent it from sagging.
Had Rainier Road been on the list for TPD before, or was that a result of the big storm that we had that had flooding across the road?
Yeah, that was an emergency repair project where the watershed flooded the road and um picked up the top layer of of asphalt and shredded it, created a lot of potholes, and we had to go in there and repair that same year. And then since Rainier was on our radar, we figured since we were there for that on the emergency repair, we might as well pick up the rest of the road all the way up to sixty six, so. Uh we also replaced sidewalk with twenty twenty three monies. This was a twenty twenty two um sidewalk repair program uh carried over into twenty twenty three. Um two thousand six hundred and six square yards of sidewalk panel repair that uh was heat by trees, mother nature. Uh anything that brings it out of ADA compliance and causes it to be replaced. Um this was six to have Parkside, Willows Crossing, Rosewood, um uh section off Cedar Kinney. And like I said, the twenty twenty two project carried over into twenty twenty three. Uh crack sealing was also done with TBD money in twenty twenty three. Uh we put down sixty two thousand five hundred and ninety. Then you feed a crack seal on Willamette and Forty First. Um that project carried over into the current year, and we spent about eighty three thousand on that in twenty twenty three. Uh summary from the work done in twenty twenty three, we we spent approximately six point nine seven billion in total. Uh we put down twenty nine thousand tons of fiber reinforced mat. Uh four point seven five miles of pavement striping, nine thousand six hundred RPMs, uh two thousand six hundred square yards of new sidewalk, and uh sixty two thousand five hundred feet of crack seal. Uh in the current year, uh this is a list of projects that are either finished or in the process of getting constructed. Uh we have Pacific and Homer Roundabout and Sherrill Ridge Striping. Uh Yum Highway, pavement rehab and citywide utility adjustments, uh twenty twenty three crack seal program that carried over into this year. Uh Carpenter Road, Britton Parkway Roundabout, there was a section of port pavement by the roundabout that wasn't picked up under the scope of that project. So TBD stepped in and paved the road, so it was more of a complete street. And and there was a portion of the Golf Club and uh Pacific Roundabout that was picked up with the uh water and wastewater improvement project. Uh here's some information on the Pacific and Homer Roundabout uh project that is going to be constructed likely after Labor Day of this year. Uh the Roundabout PCI is seventy two, Homan PCI is fifty one, it's in. The Roundabout PCI is seventy two, Homer PCI is fifty one. It's in very poor shape. Roundabouts, we don't really have a good way to maintain them. You can't crack seal them. The slide friction for motorcycles is awful if you crack seal it. And that would be a very bad thing. So there, there's other treatments that you could do with slide friction, but we don't really do chip seal. So unfortunately, with roundabouts, you let them, I wouldn't say go bad, you let them start to crack top down versus bottom up. Or top down cracking, you just overlay the top and then you preserve the surface and hopefully preserve that bottom layer of asphalt from cracking bottom up. Because once it cracks up in the bottom, the pavement generally fails. You see more of the elevated cracking, like the interlocked alligator cracking. And then more widespread cracks that are an inch plus wide. This will cost six hundred fifty thousand dollars. Paving is funded through TBD. There is also a new sidewalk going down towards thirteenth. That's going to connect a missing link there and we're going to construct a curb ramp with a bulb out there that'll be funded through bicycle impeds. Because like Scott said earlier, since it's new, technically per what our language says, we can't fund it through this TBD. And then nine hundred fifty tons of HMA are going down and like I said, the new curb gutter sidewalk ramps near thirteenth.
Is there an estimation on how long that project will take?
Um, the work in the roundabout is going to be night work and they're guessing it's going to take three to four days. And we're going to have to shut down the roundabout overnight for that. So there'll be a detour going up to Martin Way. And around, so you'll go up Carpenter to Martin over to College and likewise if you're coming the other direction.
Just during the nighttime though?
Correct. From seven PM to five AM, they're allowed to have it closed. And another project being constructed this year, probably late September, early October is the Yelm Highway pavement rehab and citywide utility adjustments. PCI is seventy seven average. There's, there's a good lane out there and then there's a bad lane. There's a section that we already repaired with a prior project. And it, it's just in kind of iffy shape, so to speak, where, where there's the, the good lane. We're just going to do a grind inlay for that section just to save some cost. Put a new layer of mat over the top, give it a new wearing course, new striping. And then for the bad lanes, we're going to do a full depth repair that's failed all the way through. I'm not sure if it's bad base, but we're, we're going down an extra eight inches below the bottom of pavement to put down a healthy slug of base to try to mitigate that, get good compaction, get the water flowing. So hopefully it won't happen again for, actually not going to win here another forty years or so. It's one point eight lane miles and we're going to put down four thousand three hundred tons of mat with this job. Also in twenty twenty four, we finished the crack seal program carried over from twenty twenty three. We spent seventy nine additional thousand dollars and it was about seventeen point five miles of crack seal that we put down. Carpenter Road and Britain Parkway Roundabout Project, PCI was seventy four, which was, this is on Britain Parkway, the lane on the north side. So the westbound lane, it didn't have a top lift on it. Because when they built it, they were planning on finishing it after the lift station went in. And then the lift station went in, the top lift never went on. It was sort of lost in the shuffle. And then it degraded faster than the other side. So unfortunately that needed to be picked up through TBD funds this year, which we added it to the project scope of that, got it done. It was paved not too long ago, brand new, fresh mat right by the roundabout. The Gulf Club Road Water and Wastewater Improvements, PCI is seventy three in that roundabout. That's the Pacific and Gulf Club Roundabout that got recently repaved. It cost fifty five thousand in TBD funds. Most of the roundabout was covered through utility work, but it didn't make sense to, for them to pay for a chunk of the roundabout that didn't have any utility work. So TBD funds were used to partner with the project and pave the whole roundabout. And then with that.
When will that Carpenter Road, Britain Parkway Roundabout project be finished? It's not finished yet and obviously we put in a new roundabout, but we were able to use transition benefit district funds because we're considering some of that as a repair.
So the, the roundabout, so, so first they just completed paving last week.
Oh, did they?
So the, so. Yes, they wait about twenty, twenty, thirty days before they can put the striping channel station down. So the, the project won't be, you know, a hundred percent complete still, you know, till later this year. But, you know, they are complete with paving portion of it. So there, so the roundabout itself was not TBD money. There was a portion adjacent to the roundabout. So there's a portion of it that's in Thurston County and Thurston County is paying for thirty piece of it. And there's another portion that was adjacent to the roundabout that was in really poor condition. That we asked to include that in the scope of this project so we could get it all paved at the same time rather than coming back at a later date. So if we partner on a project like this, we're able to, you know, take advantage of, you know, only having to close the road once and take advantage of lower prices because we have a higher volume of HMA that we're, they're bringing in.
Got it. Thank you.
With that, Aubrey, you need to take over on our project selection process and the future of TBD.
Did the council want to take action on the report or wait until my, should the presentation is done?
I would move to approve the City of Lacey Transportation Benefit District twenty twenty three annual report.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? There are none. All clear. That motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion obviously carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I am here to talk to you about future projects and project selection criteria. So when we are looking at this TBD program, there are a lot of factors that we take into account when we're deciding what areas are going to get what treatments and what areas we're going next. So part of that has to do with the functional class. So we have, you know, arterials, collectors, residential streets. So generally, an arterial street is probably going to take, you know, higher priority over residential area just because of the volume of traffic if we're, we're looking at two streets that are in the same condition. So that's, that's one way that we determine which project is going to be a higher priority. Next might be if there's a condition that requires it a safety condition. So we've had instances where we had an area that suddenly became very unsafe due to. We had an area that was in the corner of Yelm Highway that you saw during Scott's presentation. For that award, there was a portion of it that was paved in advance because we were having a safety issue on that corner. So we had to pave just that corner ahead of time before we paved the rest of Yelm Highway. Or if we have an area that's developed, you know, extreme potholes or something like that. So if we have an area that maybe wasn't previously at the top of our list and now we have safety concern, that might bump up higher on the list for priority. We're taking a look at the lifespan of a project. What treatments and what is going to have the best cost benefit? So sometimes if you have a street that we're just seeing some very, you know, minor distresses in, it might be appropriate timing to do a treatment on that street like a slurry seal rather than waiting for that street to reach a condition where you'd have to replace the whole thing. So, so it's, it's coming up with a strategy to, to make sure that we're providing the right treatments at the right time to get the most for our money. Another way we make decisions is, is based on utility coordination. So there will often be a utility project, water sewer project that comes along. And they may be only working in half of the road. And we will evaluate those to see what is the condition on the other half of the street? Is this something that makes sense for us to partner with that utility to go ahead and have them complete the design of the full roadway along with their project? And, you know, include the scope of that roadway with their project to, to take advantage of, you know, again, avoiding having to go to construction in the same area multiple years in a row and taking advantage of, of cost. Better prices that you get if you get like a larger volume of paving that you're doing. There's also project partnering for other planned work. So for example, the Carpenter Britain Roundabout that we just talked about. There was an example of, you know, we hadn't planned to pave that area, you know, right at that moment. But because there was another project that was adjacent to it, it was a perfect opportunity for us to just have that included in that scope and then at the same time.
So very interesting question. So, so you're looking at a project, right? And is, is one of the first things you do is like see what's adjacent that can happen? And then if there is some type of, you know, I guess jurisdiction or another taxable taxing authority like reach out to them and just say, hey, we're, we're going to be doing this. How can we line that up with you? And, and maybe reduce our cost, split some costs like we did with Thurston County on.
Right.
The road, right?
So we have a process for all of our capital projects, transportation and utilities. There's a thorough scoping process that happens. And so anytime a project is planned, either utility or transportation, those departments go through this process of, of an evaluation during the scoping period before we even ask for budget to determine. So any project that a utility does, they'll send it to transportation to review and vice versa. If transportation is doing a project, they send it to the water and sewer to see, to coordinate that and make sure that we're not doing any overlapping work that, you know, that we're, that we, we never want to have a scenario where we go in and pave a street and then find out that the utility department has a sewer or water project plant, you know, two years later. And so there's a lot of coordination that happens. That's just part of our capital program for, for all of our, you know, water sewer and transportation projects.
Making sure that the right hand is with the left hand is doing.
Exactly.
Probably saved us millions.
And then the, the last thing is grant opportunities. And so there are often times when we might have paving project in mind, but we, you know, we have a really good team that puts together our transportation grant applications and we've been very, very successful over the years. And part of that is knowing what grant opportunities are out there and what projects are going to be the best fit for that grant that's out there. And so sometimes we might hold off on an area because we know that this area would be a really good fit for a grant opportunity that might be coming up. And so a good example of that is like the Superteam project, which was paving College Street from forget the exact limits, but it was around the thirty seventh, all the way up to Yelm Highway and then Yelm Highway from Rattle Road over to the city limits. So that was a huge project that we were able to get a grant that covered the majority of that. I believe, you know, the city usually has matching funds that are less than twenty percent, I believe, the cost and the whole area. And so that's another reason that we might pick one project over another is for an opportunity that's not. So before I go on to talk about the upcoming projects on our list, any of you have any questions on selection criteria?
I guess before we go on, we, you talked a lot about selection criteria for for roads. What about floor sidewalks?
So for sidewalks, we do annual inspections of all of our sidewalks. Just last year, we hired a consultant to go through and map out all of our projects or all of our sidewalks throughout the city. And we have a detailed map that shows every sidewalk tripping hazard, you know, so, so it'll show like ones that are greater than, you know, two inches or, and it kind of maps out that whole system for us so we can kind of have a better idea of what areas might be needed. So we have a pretty long list of projects that, that need attention, need sidewalk replacements.
Mostly like eighteen thousand or something, is that the number I think I heard?
I don't know. I'm talking ahead, but there's quite.
Dude, how are you, how are we going to balance that out?
We're going through a process right now. We're, we're working with Dave. And we're looking at, yeah, going to have to reevaluate, you know, the kind of the liability, the risk. Of the, the yeah, our responsibilities versus property owner's responsibilities. Now Lacey is probably one of the few Cs in the country. When I started here, for years it already had a program where they go out and grind. Yeah, vertical offsets and that. But the, the number of these offsets, as council member, please have an intention, is over eighteen thousand. So it's far outpaced our ability to keep up with that in any way. So it requires a pretty thorough evaluation in terms of a path forward. And after we get through more research, you know, then we'll come to council with, with information for, for more of a discussion here. But it's, it's a it's a complicated item to address in terms of the, you know, what other communities do locally in the state and nationally. I asked MRC to do a survey and, you know, they will send out inquiry, all the other agencies. But the question, the question was, do you mark, place warning markings, vertical offsets in sidewalks where sidewalk panels have offset? You know, if so, which policy? So that goes out to every city and county. They got four responses. So it tells you it's something that's, there's, there's not a widespread, there's no direct policy, there's not a widespread practice. But it's, it's something we're actively researching.
I think, yeah, I'm really looking forward to having that conversation because I think I've, I've been on record by a bit at the Transportation Policy Board or TRPC and other places that, like the current way that we've done our sidewalks in this country is crazy where, you know, we said, we're going to take responsibility for the roadway. But as soon as it hits the sidewalks, that somehow the adjacent property owners are responsibility. That doesn't make any sense to me if you want a complete network because you would have to expect everyone to sort of redevelop at the exact same time to have a transportation network that works for your community. That's never going to happen. And so I, I, I'm, I know the system is broken. I, I guess what I'm interested in is how can we sort of fix it under the constraints, financial constraints that we have. And I think that what needs, what we need to do is have a conversation with this council, especially as it's going out looking for the, the you know, to renew this, you know, do we look at going another tenth of a percent and dedicating that and the percent specifically for our, our sidewalks, maintenance, preservation and expansion? And that's something, a conversation that needs to be had. I don't know when we're going to have it, but I think that's a very important conversation. Because there's a lot of people who use our sidewalks who can't drive. And so we're, we're taking care of it for the driver, but we're not taking care for it, the person who happens to be in the wheelchair. And that's just, doesn't seem like a, a good system, you know, in our community. So I think it deserves a conversation. Looking at it, I just, it's, it's a big issue.
Eighteen thousand areas where you have a lift like that is, I mean, that, that in itself, forgetting completing the, the network that isn't complete. Just that repair, I mean, you're talking astronomical amount of time and energy and money.
Yeah, yeah, but you have to get started somewhere.
Absolutely. Because it's, I mean, it's a problem. I get complaints about it in the neighborhood regularly because there's a bunch of them in there.
In those lifted areas, if it's a tree causing the lift, are we, do we take?
We do. So that's what I was going to mention. It's so personal. Almost all of the lifts are because of trees. And so part of that process is typically the tree has to be removed because we're removing enough of the roots to keep the sidewalk from being damaged again. We're typically, the tree is going to end up dying. And so part of that process, it's not just the cost of replacing the sidewalk. We have to remove the existing tree, then we replace the, the side. Then we replace the the sidewalk and it's often, it's more than just the one panel because the tree root is, you know, raising sometimes adjacent panels as well. We have to replace the sidewalk, then we have to replace the tree as well. And so it's.
It's so much more deep rooted than that, if you will.
Good play on words.
Well, I mean, it affects sewer lines and irrigation lines and you name it.
Well, this is the one of the things that we try ourselves being Tree City USA, but then we say we have to plant trees. And then the trees are damaged in the sidewalks, we have to replace the sidewalks and everything. I mean, it's.
Well, some of that goes back to not planting the right trees in the past. I think we have a lot better, from what I've heard of Scott, I think we have a lot better knowledge now of which trees don't cause the sidewalk damage.
That's much.
Than we did when a lot of these were planted.
Sure.
Now we do three wells and root barrier too. Trying to mitigate the damage.
Let's don't go out.
But you you're right, really early on, we just planted trees and without thought what the tree is gonna do twenty five years from now. And so I we've gotten a lot better about that. And we've actually, as a council, looked at all that and trained and and changed our policy when it comes to what trees we plant alongside sidewalks and so forth. But anyway, this is like sort of, you know, we 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 had made this decision, the future, you know, past councils have made this decision. And it's it's caused this issue and I think we're responsible for addressing it one way or the other. Just time and money.
So I noticed um throughout some of the newer sections of the city, um, it as opposed to having like two lanes. It'll have like one lane on either side, a planter strip in the middle and then bicycle lanes, uh, which everybody's grateful for. And so so how did, I mean, is it, is it possible that we can create more bicycle lanes? Um, with with absent the fact that, you know, it's it's a newly developed area? Is there, is there a possibility that we can?
Well, so if we create, I mean, to to create bicycle lanes, you're essentially having to make the the road wider. So you have to look at what those impacts are to, but then you may have to purchase right of way. And the same with, there's been areas where we've, you know, I know councils had questions about, you know, adding new sidewalks. But there's, there's a whole, it's kind of a domino effect of of the other. So it's not that you can't do it, but but bike lane means a wider roadway, sidewalks mean a wider roadway. Um, adding sidewalks in an area that doesn't currently have sidewalks also also means storm, you know, treatment. So it's, it's.
It's complex.
Yeah, we've had that conversation about, uh, you know, well, at TRPC, we talked about, you know, the path to school would probably be the the very first place you want to start putting. Sidewalks, but then we also talked about, you know, those residents aren't gonna give up. Uh, what'd you say it was, forty feet, thirty four? For your standard section.
Right for.
Yeah.
Yeah, just about, something like that.
You know, in terms of capital planning, capital program, we go through this process, you know, and the transportation compliance can be updated. But um you identify the the needs in the projects and you prioritize those projects. Based on community input and, you know, uh, and then it's a matter of marrying up the project with the funding that's come along. But to get to, you know, like pass routes to school, for example, um, Alstelcom, the Squali Middle School. The county has had a funded project that ultimately got stopped by pocket gophers. And that would have completely widened the road, put in landscape strips, sidewalks, separated the children from the street. But forever, all that's been there is a goat path, you know, asphalt ditch, goat path.
Yep, yeah, like a mullet.
And so. For our kids because of gophers.
Yeah. Um.
It's crazy.
So, uh, a- anyway, that's, that's the kind of planning and programming and capital funding. You know, when we take, say, a two lane road and expand it like in that area, like we've done on Carpenter between Pacific and Martin Way or or that. You know, that's, that's the best time to install those facilities. And, you know, we look at a lot of options, but as Aubrey said, typically it's can invite, in involve widening the road. Um, there's a lot of armchair traffic engineers out there, you know, who have like speculated, well, why don't you change Rattle Road to a three lane section and put in bike lanes? But, you know, I I mean, I've talked to the traffic uh engineer and 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 transportation manager, City Seattle. And, you know, we we talked to the peers within the industry and there are certain criteria that that works. And and so the the armchair quarterbacks say, hey, I drove this uh route in Seattle and they did this, that would work great here. It's like, well, no, it wouldn't because there's a two other parallel minor arteries that that traffic kind of moves over to. Traffic's gonna go somewhere where we don't have that here. We've got Hickslake on one side and College on the other.
Yeah.
And traffic volumes are just going up. So all that to say, there are a lot of ideas out there, but we flushed them out. So in terms of opportunities to add bike lanes on our materials, like say Rattle and those kind of things. Yeah, we've, we've looked at those opportunities and and it gets back to what Aubrey said, you know, I mean, you pretty much have to widen the road to fit in.
Building a new road.
Yeah.
And that comes with the major projects.
Go ahead.
So looking at projects that we have planned for twenty twenty five and beyond. Uh, so for twenty twenty five, we are asking for budget from the T P D to work on Eighth Avenue. Which is the street that sort of looks like a an alleyway over there off of Slater Kenny.
Oh, yeah.
And which is in in very poor condition. You can see the PCI is sixteen.
I thought it wasn't.
So that.
Is that the worst in the city? I mean, that's, I've not seen a number that low. Sixteen's pretty bad.
So that's the, that's the back of, so Selma into, wait, that's considered Eighth?
Yes, so that it, I believe it has a street, uh.
Like backs up to Matt's farm or something.
Yeah, just dead ends into shopping center.
But that is a city street and it, it's definitely being repaired, so.
I I don't, how much traffic does that get? Right?
Right, but at some point, I mean, we can't let it just go back to being a gravel road. So, I mean, we've, we've been.
If no one uses it monthly. One of these barriers that says future connection.
Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, we've had, we paved our last gravel street, I think it was around two thousand fifteen or or sixteen. And and the shop was really thankful because they're not easy to maintain.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Well, that gravel gets on regular roads and deteriorates a lot faster too.
Uh, so the businesses all in that area will be very happy. They've been asking for that. Sidewalk repairs, so. Right now, we have, because we have been putting such a high focus on uh streets over the last couple of years. We haven't, uh, we had a sidewalk program in twenty twenty two that had kind of carried over into the following year. Uh, but we haven't put out any sidewalk repairs since then. So our plan was to set aside one point five million to focus on sidewalk repairs next year. And we're currently working through a str- a strategy on which areas to go in. Um, you know, we, we're not just gonna, you can't just pick the worst off the list because you have to look at uh location too. If a whole neighborhood overall has, you know, many of them versus, you know, one in the area. So we kind of have to group them a little bit by location as well. So we'll be working with a strategy on that.
That's gonna be a tough one because there's gonna be a lot of competing people who who want that, especially in older communities who are out and their sidewalks quiet a bit.
Right? So, you know, we're, we're gonna take a look at the report that the consultant put forward on, you know, what those uh sidewalk. Um, and differences are and I'm gonna come up with some areas that we think are the best fit for that next year. Uh, we also are planning to set aside uh five hundred thousand dollars to do some slurry seal work. We have not selected all of the neighborhoods for that yet. So that's typically uh something that we start doing in the fall. So um we'll have an instruction and design update for you probably this winter. But we'll have some more detailed information on on that selection process. We have the college extension project, which we're waiting on right of way on. So I I don't have a certain date for when we're gonna go out to add for that. We were hoping to advertise that in October if we get right of way completed. But Sixth Avenue, which is the street in front of North Thurston High School. That also has some utility work in it. Um, and that's in in coordination at PCI fifty two. So the college extension project itself has grant, T A B grant funding. Uh, and so the portion that we're doing on Sixth will be out of the T B D, not for the utility piece of it, just for the paving portion of it. And then we have the Britton Gateway Roundabout Project. It has a PCI of seventy five, but that, uh, keep in mind, that's an average. So there's one quadrant of that roundabout that is uh failing. And um so we've had maintenance staff have to go out there and patch it up. So our plan is to pave that next year. Uh, the design on that is complete. We're just waiting on. There was some settling of a utility line in there and we're just confirming what the issues are going on with utility work. To see if there's any utility work that needs to partner with this project.
Well, that's getting a lot more use now with all the housing that's back there, obviously.
Um, some other potential projects that we have in the queue that we may start. Um, some preliminary design on next year's just survey is Willamette Drive Northeast, which has a PCI of sixty six. And Thirty F, uh, which is also sixty six. We have um some projects that we've identified may need some utility work that we may start some scoping. And some preliminary design work on next year, uh, which include Compton Boulevard, uh, Classic Heights. Clearbrook Holman Area and Wellington Stikes Area. But um you saw in Brian's presentation that, you know, we spent a lot of money, you know, the last couple of years. And so we also have to balance this with, you know, uh, our projections for what kind of sales tax we're gonna get from that. And then also keep in mind that our T B T is expires in two thousand seventeen. I'm sorry, two thousand twenty seven. Uh, so with that sort of future being uncertain, we want to make sure that we're taken care of. Um, so making sure we're taking care of, you know, the most needed areas um first and go with the strategy for how to move forward. We're gonna have to start thinking about this probably next year on. But.
Would have to go out in A- April, uh, April of twenty six?
We did February of twenty six, or we did, we did February two thousand seventeen previously. And from that, we started collecting taxes, I believe, in July of.
April first, but the receipts were July.
Okay.
So when do we have to go out to have a continuous?
February would be the last.
Same thing.
February of seven, of twenty seven.
Like there's a notice to the our revenue requirement that we have to plug in what the sales tax rate will be.
So when would we have to go out for the ballot measure, twenty, in twenty six and?
Well, we did September of September, the previous September, the resolution for the ballot measure was signed. But it was actually on the ballot February, right?
Yes. I'm still trying to figure out when.
February of twenty seven. So it would have to be on the ballot.
Because it expires at the end of twenty seven.
Well, I mean, it's, so the ten, we want to go to the voters. On the ten year anniversary or sooner.
Yeah.
The ten year anniversary is February, Valentine's Day, actually.
Of twenty six.
Of twenty seven. Can, can we go earlier though? Or do, I mean, I mean. Yeah, you can go earlier. Not a lot earlier, but I'm thinking if you, would we want to go one election cycle earlier than that?
Cheaper, general election, special election.
There's some discussions that need, that need to happen and we had talked about that.
And then if A W C successfully lobbies for the legislation to make all sales tax councilmatic. That's another, you know, that would be twenty twenty five legislation going to affect twenty twenty six and you all could have something else to talk about. If I'm still here, I I would want to go to the voters. Not a big fan of councilmatic.
Or could they just give back all the share revenue that they took and? Wow, same. Okay, any other questions?
Go out a little early, maybe, say, maybe the primary of twenty twenty six. So that way you've got a chance and another run at it if it doesn't pass the first time.
I think those were some conversations.
A little early, but you get helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little bit of time, but those discussions will have to start happening pretty soon.
Yeah, in twenty five for sure.
Yep.
Okay, we'll, we'll be bringing this to council for discussions and um.
We clearly have to do it and we have to get it approved.
I would say this, with all the challenges that we face every day in past decades, and stuff, you guys have done a wonderful job with what you've been given, all your own situations.
We've also brought in twice as much as we said we were gonna bring in, so.
Which is also a lesson to, a lesson for everybody that when you spend your money, you vote, it stays here.
Again, I think that shows our our projections on what we needed. And uh, you know, when you look at what those projections were, we've been getting about an average of about three point four million a year. Which has, you know, enabled us to to pretty much maintain our our PCI number over the years.
And that's one thing COVID did was prove to you that where you spend your money makes a difference.
Okay, let's, thank you. Uh, let's go on to our next agenda, which is the second quarter investment report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. You have in your packet the full details of the second quarter city investment uh report. I'm not going to go through the full twenty one page report from our investment advisor, but just hit the highlights. Um, just as a reminder, the report does include market commentary. Uh, has a little section in terms of compliance with our investment policy. There's a lot of information about transactions and actual holdings that the city has. So feel free to view that at your leisure. Um, in terms of performance, we're right there at our our benchmarks. Um, so the city's uh core fund portfolio, so the core are long term investments. Uh, we were two one hundreds under the uh benchmark. And the primary reason for that is just because we are holding long term investments. And then the uh the interest rates have just been, well, they skyrocketed over the last eighteen months. So we were holding investments at lower interest rates, which devalues them. So that's included in terms of that calculation of that uh that benchmark. I do have to mention again that we did have an unrealized loss of about three point nine million dollars. The key term there is unrealized, that we have no intention of taking a loss on any city investment. Uh, the only way that would happen is if we had to sell an investment prior to the maturity date. Again, at value because we had a lower interest rate. But uh we do a very good job in terms of laddering our funds. Uh, we pay very close attention to our cash flows. So again, no intention or uh anticipation that we would have to sell investment early. Um, in terms of the market commentary, this is again from second quarter. So six weeks ago, I think we've been there and back again in terms of the economy. Um, at the close of the second quarter, the Federal Reserve chose not to uh decrease rates. We're still at that place. Uh, but we saw, um, you know, unexpected job market uh uh report a couple of weeks ago. That caused a lot of turmoil in the markets. It seems to be stabilized again, so that's where we've been there and back. I think we're kind of in the same spot that we were at the end of the second quarter. Um, in terms of the yield from the portfolio, um, we had a slight increase. It was about three point five. We're sitting at three point six seven at the end of the second quarter. So you can see those gains as we are turning over those investments. Um, in terms of positioning of the portfolio, um, we're looking at slightly longer duration. Uh, just because we're anticipating a reduction in rates. The Federal Reserve, I think it's going to be pretty much a done deal that there's going to be a a rate cut in September. The market is uh fully priced in a uh point two five percent decrease. Uh, the Federal Reserve does not like to surprise the market, so I would be very, very surprised if we didn't see that decrease. I think the only question is, is it going to be a point two five or point five percent decrease? Um, so given that we're uh looking at um. That, that's stretching our duration a little bit to take advantage of those long-term rates for a longer amount of time. So in summary, we're right where we should be in terms of our benchmarks and we are paying attention to the markets and. We'll be looking at, uh, securing our future in terms of some of these earnings.
We've got, made more money in interest this year, year-to-date than we've had in the prior, what, six years together, seven years together?
Oh, that's probably not too far off, if you look back to two thousand fourteen, the general fund. Earned about fifty thousand in interest, I think we hit two million last year, so.
What year was fifty thousand?
Two thousand fourteen, I think, two thousand fourteen to two thousand fifteen. Yeah, we, we've earned forty times the amount since. In one, in, in two thousand twenty-three compared to two thousand fourteen, so. But that's, that's a condition of the market, I'm not trying to humble brag or anything.
No.
But, but yeah, we've, we've done well and it's, it's something we're keeping an eye on and it's certainly. Looking at the future in terms of budgets, um, we have. You know, that's, that's extended our revenues and allowed us to fund, um, expansion to some of our. Staff as an example, so, you know, that's, it's another, it's another challenge coming up too.
Keep in mind that's also factoring in the dramatic raise in inflation, not exactly, you know, that's not pure profit. So there is that factor.
Sure, sure. Well, and, and we've been, you know, we haven't, how much have our, um. You know, we've been seeing on, 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 on ton of reserves, obviously, which has been gaining its interest. But we're about ready to see a, a big chunk of those reserves are obviously going to our, our police station. And then we, we also have to factor in, when are you gonna go out? To bond for the, the rest of what's, oh, what, where we're at in that. And when you, when you're even saying now's the time?
Uh, soon.
Yeah.
I actually have appointments to meet with our, um, our bond, bond underwriter next week. I'll be engaging, uh, bond counsel, uh, before the end of the month. Um, we actually have a couple of the bond issues to talk about, uh, we have Tony Estates, uh, L I D, that will be a bond issue. Uh, we're going to be taking a look at the two thousand thirteen utility revenue bonds, uh, to potentially refund those. To take advantage of lower rates to, to save an interest. And then we have the police station bonds, that's about eighteen million or so. Um, I'm anticipating first quarter next year, so there'll be a lot of.
So we'll, we'll hopefully, it's one way, we want interest rates to stay high so we can get the yield, but on. On this, we want it to drop, so it's, so it's not costing as much as when we go out.
Yeah, fortunately, there's not a great deal of correlation between short-term rates, the overnight rate for the Federal Reserve or long-term rates. Uh, but there's a little bit, so, yeah, we're certainly paying attention to that, um, you know, we know mortgage rates are. From my perspective, they're still historically low, but you know, from recent rates, you know, two point five percent. Pretty your mortgage rates, we're at six and a half, I think, is the last time I looked. Uh, so, you know, in terms of that short-term rate, long-term rate, again, there's some correlation, but there's not a lot. Yeah, we definitely wanna balance that and pay attention to the timing.
When, when we're talking about long-term rates for our investments, what, I mean, are we talking in, long-term rates go out to ten years? I, I doubt we're investing that, but what are our? Long-term rates that, that we will invest in versus the short-term?
Uh, it's five years is the longest we look at, policy actually allows up to, I think, five and a half years. But that's really just to allow us, for some reason, the market, there's a, like a five point one year.
Yeah.
A sweet spot there, so we wanna make sure after those, but. Um, in terms of overall duration, we aim at, uh, in terms of the whole core portfolio. Um, we look at a average duration of about two point one, two point two years. Uh, so again, five years is the longest we've been left.
Yeah, anyway, that's only, I think, two years, probably like four point seven, five years, like four point five, you know, percent right now, it's not a huge difference.
Right, correct.
So do you anticipate like the same situation with Pango Wild East is with. Only Estates, and the only reason why I bring that up is getting the word out, right? Cause it, they'll have to join that, right? And there's probably gonna be some residents that are gonna be hesitant and we need to share this, you know, the experience that others. Who opted out. Don't ruin the same, you know, I mean, on that situation.
It's already been formed, so, um. We're actually gearing that a complete, uh, construction, I. I think you may see the final assessment role, role in October, maybe November. Um, so, yeah, that's, that's.
How many people opted out?
I don't know that anybody had that option because they had a failing, yeah.
That's good, though, so we've learned from.
I, I don't think it, it was not optional as well.
Assistant failed, they had to do it.
This was an option. They had no choice.
Is there any other questions?
But we, you briefly talked about the unemployment, I know we get, you know, we had the large dramatic increase in unemployment by, you know, point five percent. Do we get, do we get citywide unemployment, just what, what we're looking at, do we get those, those statistics?
Uh, there's a Thurston County unemployed, I don't think it gets down into the city level.
Okay. I was just wondering, cause obviously that's, you know, important for what our community looks like.
Sure, definite difference.
Our, our last agenda, I am, is the new year financial report.
We have a, uh, full staff report in the, uh, agenda, again, I'd just like to hit the highlights for you all. Um, so midterm, and we'll focus on the general fund, of course, that's where, um, you know, most. Most of our citizens, uh, recognize our, um, our services that we provide to them, so here are. All the various divisions within, uh, the current expense fund. Yeah, this is what I think our citizens recognize the most. In terms of the increase, you can see that there's a twenty point six million dollar increase. Uh, that is almost entirely explained by increases to the cost of labor. And, uh, cash transfers for the construction of the police station and training facilities, so. Really focus my comments there, um, there's timing differences throughout all these divisions, there's a, there's some areas where we have just increased scope. Um, a couple of examples is jail services, um, both timing and the amount of jail beds we have is, has, uh, increased since last year, but. Um, in general, in terms of our day-to-day operations, expenditures are occurring just as we had expected and, and budgeted for. Um, in terms of the full general fund, so our general fund is now made up of seven funds with the new newly formed Public Safety Fund, which is the voter-approved. Uh, point two percent sales tax, so again, seven funds now in our general fund. Uh, when you look at all the funds together, um, where we have about a twenty-two point four million dollar increase over mid-year two thousand twenty-three. Um, again, if you look at the criminal justice fund there of an increase of one point seven, one point six million of that is, again, a transfer into the. Uh, construction fund for the police station. So I do wanna talk about the cost of labor, um. We, if you look at through July, I know this is a mid-year report, but I want the council to have the most up-to-date information, so. If you look at July twenty twenty-three to July twenty twenty-four, we have about a two point three million dollar increase in. And, uh, benefits and, uh, salaries. Um, if you just take a straight line extrapolation of that, um, we'll have about a four point five million dollar increase over that, uh, over the year. Um, again, all accounted for in our budget. The next slide, I'll really kind of explain where, where we've been. So here's a ten-year history of our, uh, budgeted, uh, cost, uh, uh, for labor and. Uh, and a side-by-side comparison of actuals, so. I've also added two thousand twenty-four year-to-date again through July. Um, you can really see the impact that, that COVID had and the challenges of filling positions. I'll see that period, so if you look pre-COVID, so two thousand fourteen through two thousand nineteen. Um, we spent about ninety-five percent of the budgeted. Uh, for labor, um. You know, that's somewhere five percent vacancies essentially throughout the year, which is what I would call the, the norm. Uh, but if you look. At what happened at COVID, so, yeah, in two thousand nine, that's considered two thousand nineteen, the last normal year we had, we spent ninety-seven percent of our labor budget. Uh, COVID occurred, we started to, we held positions, uh, we were really nervous about what might happen to the economy. Um, we started to have some turnover, we only spent ninety percent of our budget. In two thousand twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-one, that continued, we dropped down to about eighty-nine percent spent the budget. Two thousand twenty-two is really where we hit the bottom, uh, eighty-five and a half percent of budget spent. Uh, we were about five million dollars under budget in terms of, uh, our labor budget. Um, two thousand twenty-three, you know, things started to stabilize, um, we're at, we ended up at ninety-four point nine percent of, of budget expended. Um, we only saved about, uh, one point six million in labor costs. Then if you look at, uh, two thousand twenty-four, again, through July, um. I just took a straight line, seven twelfths of our budget, and we spent almost ninety-seven percent of our. Our budget so far, so I think we're back to normal. Um, I think all of our divisions are thankful that we're getting most of the fully staffed, um. So the good news is we are getting fully staffed, we're better able to respond to the public, but. It doesn't come without costs, so, uh, we're back to normal and.
It's back to open budget, I mean, that, that difference just helped us build those reserves even further those last few years.
That's correct, that's correct. So it's a nice kind of segue into that reserve discussion, um, except for now we're shifting from reserves to transfers, so it's allowed us really to. Build this police station, I'm not quite sure how we would have done it otherwise, other than incurring a great deal of debt. Or having to ask the public for, uh, a property tax increase to pay for that. Um, so in terms of, uh. Transfers, you can see the difference, there's roughly eighteen million dollars difference between two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, and it's. Almost entirely the, the police station. Um, but as expected, again, we are budgeted for those transfers. Um, if you look at two thousand twenty-three, we have transportation, um. You know, Scott talked about the four point seven million dollar annual budget and only getting about a million dollars in, uh. And, uh, gas tax, the difference comes from transfers on the general fund. Uh, we also have a little bit of, uh, uh, rack support, that's about three hundred fifty thousand, roughly the same numbers in twenty-four, so again. Uh, your difference is, uh, general fund identified reserves being transferred to the capital fund. Um, I'm happy to say that we have spent the entirety of our ARPA dollars, so in two thousand twenty-four, we transferred three point seven million dollars into that fund. Um, we, I think we've talked to the council about having those funds be the first ones spent, just because of the deadlines in terms of getting those expanded, so. Again, I think the, uh. Uh, the cost of labor increases and these transfers explain almost the entirety of our increase at, at mid-year. Uh, wanna talk about the revenue side of our budget. You know, we're, we're seeing a shift, I think that's really the, the theme, um, so here's, here's your tax category for the general fund. About eighty-seven, eighty-five thousand higher. Um, one of the areas that, um, I, I do need to point out is under the utility tax for waters who were in storm. The council might remember that we eliminated the, uh, six point zero four percent lane versus Seattle. Fire flow utility tax, so that was about a million dollars, so that's, that's really reflected there in that decrease. Of, uh, two hundred and sixty thousand roughly, but if you take that impact out, utility tax for utilities actually increased about a hundred and ninety-four thousand, so. Uh, that's not to say there was a decrease there in terms of volume or what we're seeing is our tax base. Um, natural gas, that's, you know, that's really dependent on the weather, we had a pretty mild, uh, winter, um, this year. Um, of course, you see sales tax, again, this is mid-year, so that's a two hundred and seventy-seven thousand increase, July, we had a. Roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollar decrease, so, um, things have definitely changed since, uh, since June. Uh, looking at fees and services, uh. Have a slight decrease, about seventy-four thousand, uh, the majority of that is coming from. What, uh, may be a downturn in terms of development, um, you can see the licenses and permits down a hundred ninety-five thousand. Uh, the majority of that is building permits, building permits are down about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars through, um, mid-year. Um, if you look at economic development or economic environment and plan check. Checking fees down about sixty-eight thousand, uh, that too is related to potentially future development. Plan check fees are down about fifty-three thousand through mid-year. Uh, so hopefully things turn around, um, second half of the year. Um, July was not good in terms of that volume, um, you know, those decreases even grew larger in July, so. Fingers crossed that development, or at least indicators of development, start to pick up second half. Uh, intergovernmental revenues. Um, a decrease of just over a million dollars, uh, well, that is entirely the. One million dollar grant we received from the Small Business Administration for the. Expansion of the Makerspace, so, uh, really things are pretty consistent there. Um, maybe that's a good segue, I wasn't sure if I was actually gonna say anything about the Governor's Smart Communities Award since Rick's not here, I didn't wanna. I didn't wanna steal his thunder, but you might have saw on the Olympian that we did receive a, a Smart Communities Award for. Exceptional land use and planning and, uh, and development. Um, certainly that doesn't go without partnership, St. Martin's, uh, Thurston, uh, E D C, of course, city staff, um. Reason I feel okay saying it, I don't think Rick would take the credit he deserves for this, so. Um, you know, he did a lot of work, him and his team, Community Economic Development did a lot to, uh, receive that award and, you know, it's. Really great to see the success of the Makerspace. Uh, in terms of miscellaneous revenues, um, about a one point three million dollar decrease. Um, very similar to the grant in the previous slide, um, we have, uh, another miscellaneous, uh, category there, four hundred ninety-three. That was our decrease, that is related to about a five hundred eighty-one thousand on federal. Um, allotment to the Veterans, uh, Services Hub. Uh, interest earnings, uh. That number you're seeing there, seven hundred ninety-five thousand or decrease, that's more related to market adjustments, uh, required by accounting standards. So you remember the unrealized loss we talked about in the investment, uh, report? In this number, there's a one point nine million dollar decrease in terms of an adjustment there. Uh, but overall, for, if you remove that impact, uh, interest earnings for the general fund are up about three hundred and. Sixty-six thousand through mid-year, so that's, I say we're doing well there.
So it's just a different accounting, now we have to show that unrealized loss?
We do, so.
We didn't have to in twenty-three, wouldn't they change that?
Well, no, it's been a fact, it's just, it's a delayed impact because of those market assessments.
Okay, I got it, so we did have to, but we, okay, got it.
Yeah, it's a delayed impact.
I know, that's, that's.
If you're actually gonna lose.
It's weird, yeah, if you were to turn, what you're not going to, there'd be unrealized loss that you have to report out.
It's not real because you're not actually gonna sell them.
As well, it's, it's all about conservatism, we, we report all losses is what we do, so.
No, I get it.
Not that we're going to incur it, but.
If you did this, you'd lose money.
Yeah.
Right, so we shouldn't do it.
Looking at the utility funds, uh, these are your three utilities and the, uh, total revenues for those funds. Um, of course, you can see some pretty big increases for water and wastewater there. Uh, that really has to do with the fact, the change, so we, we made a couple of different changes in our utility rate, so. It's the taxes as well as the, uh, we stopped, uh, receiving replacement funds into our capital funds. It's now going into the operating funds directly, so. Uh, you're seeing, and plus we've had some, uh, you know, increases to rates, so. Um, a lot of things happening with the utilities, but again, all budgeted and coming in pretty much as expected. Uh, on the expenditure side for the, uh, utilities, um. The only thing to really have note there is the, uh, the water utility. Um, a two point five million dollar increase to expenditures, that's almost entirely effect, it's more than explained by the capital transfer. Uh, so we increased our capital transfer because of those replacement funds not being directly received, so we had a three point three million dollar increase to capital transfers. From the water operating fund into the water capital fund, so. Again, things are, uh, being expended as, as, as expected. So let's talk a little bit about, about the financial outlook, um. Now, we wanna talk about property tax, property tax is one of the more significant sources of, uh, resources for the general fund. So while we get a ten-year history of new construction. So while we got a ten year history of new construction. You can see a nice bell curve um for that, so. Um, these are in, if you, and these bars are, if you use the left hand uh scale. Uh, we really peaked in two thousand twenty one. We added three hundred and ten million dollars of new construction that year, and we've been going down since. Uh, two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four, we added about a hundred and seventy six million. Um, at this point for the two thousand twenty five budget, I have factored in a hundred and fifty million dollar uh increase to new construction. So. Uh, we'll, we should see those first numbers early part of September, I think, is when the county assessor. Um, does that first analysis? Uh, but in terms of um actual increases from that, so the red line here, you could see the history of. Uh, increases from that new construction. Um, the red line uses the right hand scale in terms of uh, so you could see the the context of that. Um. You know, again, it's been going down. Of course, that makes sense if new construction has been going down, so. Um, definitely a smaller increase from new construction expected in two thousand twenty five. Uh, we also have a lower levy rate. Uh, than we did back in two thousand twenty one as well, so. About a hundred and eight thousand dollars at this point in terms of new construction increases. Uh, the one percent of the council wants to use that authority is about another ninety thousand, so. About a two hundred thousand increase in terms of property tax increases projected for two thousand twenty five. Uh, do you want to talk about sales tax a little bit? This is your June numbers. Of course, you've seen these all from uh the the monthly email I sent. Um. Uh, but June is was our first decrease. Uh, it's about a three percent decrease, if I remember right, in June. Um, so that was really the first time I kind of started watching, have some concerns about sales tax. Um, July, we had a ten point four percent decrease from July to July. Uh, so. I've been very careful not to call any of this a trend, but we're. I think we have to consider this a trend at this point. Uh, our March increase, so March sales tax is based on January sales, so. Really, at the beginning of two thousand twenty four, we had an eight point eight percent increase to sales tax, so things were were going well. April, we had a one point four percent increase, so April would have been February sales. Uh, May was essentially. No change, it was a point oh eight percent increase. Uh, June, again, was a three percent, three point two percent decrease, and July was a ten point four percent decrease, so. Um, obviously not confidence building in terms of looking ahead uh to the future, so. Um, I know I said.
Factoring in inflation, really, there was only one month of increase, which would have been January. But March, but for January.
Right.
The rest are all decreased if you.
True.
Put in inflation.
That's true. So we'll be watching this very carefully. We'll get our next sales tax receipts uh around August twenty fourth, somewhere there, so. Fingers crossed, we'll be watching very carefully at that point. Um, just another way of looking at that sales tax. This is uh, you know, what happened in terms of kind of broader categories in July. Um, you know, the more concerning number there is the retail trade going down eight percent. Uh, that is by far our largest category uh for sales tax, uh construction. Had a pretty big decrease, but it's very cyclical normally, so. I'm not too much concerned there, but that retail trade one is is one to keep an eye on. Uh, here's the same information, but year to date, so you can see retail trade with those last two drops, the last two months were. Basically at the same level as.
Does wholesale trade tend to be a precursor to the retail, though? Do you typically see that drop first, I would think?
Uh, that's a really hard category.
Yeah, what is wholesale trade?
So wholesale trade includes, uh, you know, obviously our our worthless district, and it's it's not a large category, but. Also, what falls into here is um what I would call development impacts. So um if if a a large robot puts in a a large computer system or maybe an HVAC system. That isn't taxable at the wholesale level, it gets taxed at the construction level. Uh, so, but you do, you do sometimes see that within that category, so when that, when we actually. And the the contractors are actually paid. Uh, those subs get paid there, so it it's again cyclical nature too. Hmm, one large adult that could really impact that category. So it's all the same, sales tax is going to be a a difficult one to predict for next year and. Um, I will probably use every month I can before the council adopts the budget to really kind of assess that. Um, again, salaries and benefits, uh we do need to talk about that in terms of, you know, what we're, you know, going to project for next year. Um, again, you know, as you saw from those earlier slides, um. You know, significant growth within this area. Um, we've added positions um since two thousand seventeen, I think. Um, we've had higher levels of COLAs is because of that inflation, and we are reaching. You know, fully staffed, so uh definitely seen that in the numbers. Um, here's your, on top of that, you had the benefit piece to that. Um, in terms of our growth from our ten year growth from two thousand fourteen to two thousand thirteen, that's about a fourteen million dollar level of growth. Uh, we've added, um, again, quite a few uh positions over that time period. Um, so again, everything's budgeted and expected, but. Certainly a a high level of growth. Um, in terms of percentage growth, that's you can see that here in the yellow line and scales on the right. I guess a twenty percent growth from twenty twenty three to twenty two, but again. A very different story in terms of how many vacancies we had in two thousand twenty two. Um, in terms of projected benefit increases. Uh, we're actually expecting a slight decrease to the city's contribution to PERS, uh so about a four tenths decrease. Uh, left at this point is unchanged for two thousand twenty five. Uh, Regent's medical insurance projecting anywhere between seven and ten percent increases. We are going to budget for that full ten percent. Uh, we won't know until, I think, October, what the benefit trusts. Any with those rates. Uh, Kaiser, same same range, seven to ten percent. Uh, just for the council's information, I think about sixty percent employees are in Regent's, forty percent on Kaiser. Um, dental, uh we offer two different plans, Delta Dental. Um, it is a zero to four percent increase being projected. Uh, while I'm at uh six to nine percent, and I think we have a more of a majority in Delta Dental. And then at this point, no increase projected for vision. Uh, federal funds were rate, and we talked a little bit about this during the previous report. Uh, we've. Been holding steady at that five and a half percent uh overnight rate. Uh, but again, I think the market is fully expecting a at least a point two percent decrease in. Um, September. Um, at this point, I think it's really how many decreases for the end of the year and how large. So it's really gonna be data dependent, dependent, of course. Um, inflation's gonna is going to obviously play uh a key role and and what happens in terms of our expenditure levels for two thousand twenty five. Uh, this is the U S Consumer Price Index. Um, the July uh two thousand twenty uh twenty four. Index was three point two percent. Uh, this index is actually going to be released tomorrow, so this will be dated information very quickly. Um, I don't think there's any anticipated. Shock. I think we're going to see a a little bit of a decrease from year to year. I think we're going to see an increase from June to July. June actually had a decrease in inflation, but I I don't think anyone's anticipating that to be the case. Um, of course, locally, we use the uh Seattle Tacoma Bellevue. Um, the last uh factor we saw was. Um, June, it was four point six percent, and as you know, we lag behind the U S. Um, so we're expecting, we'll actually see a factor. Uh, Seattle's factors aren't released every other month, but it will be released in in August tomorrow. Um, did want to give the council an update on excise tax. Of course, this is going to be the future source of repaying the. Uh, police station and training center debt. Um. We're we're holding steady. Um, two point five million dollars is kind of that magic number. Um, we expect if we stay at that two point five uh level, that one point five will go to debt, one point. One million to go to future capital projects. Um, at this point for two thousand twenty four, if uh just kind of extrapolating it out, straight line, it's about two point seven. Right, uh for the entire year. And wanna close on, you've already seen this this uh this instruction, this little excerpt from our. Our message to the organization. Uh, but I think it's even more true now, um given what's happened to the economy since May. Um, I think we're anticipating that um we're going to be in a in a maintenance mode. In terms of what to expect for the proposed two thousand twenty five budget. Uh, so we're going to certainly prioritize sustainability. We want to maintain our core functions. We want to maintain our levels of service. Uh, we do want to address council priorities, um but I think that's kind of the order. And then we'll last look at departmental enhancements, so our our directors do a really good job in holding costs. To a minimum, but there are always growing needs there, but uh we do think that any enhancements to the budget will be the last thing we look at in terms of. What we put in that proposed budget. So, um, I think it will be a challenging budget. Next year and. Uh, not a lot of growth within that, but. You know, we've uh we've done well with our conservative approach. Uh, we do have. Uh, reserves to look at. Um, you know, we certainly hope that any sort of downturn in the economy is is going to be short-lived, so. So more to come on that, so. Thought I'd be happy to answer any questions or any thoughts that the council may have.
Questions? Seeing none, we've reached the end of our agenda. Without objection, I will call this work session adjourned, and as always, you keep it classy, Lacey.